All right. All right, well, thank you very much. Would you invite any public participation? Your papers? All right, thank you. And Jacqueline, do you have anything that you'd like to add for the students' representative report?
Yes, so last Thursday was the end of our first semester. So that means all those grades are kind of finalized, coming to a close. The majority of our fall sports teams, their regular seasons have come to an end. And so our tournaments are starting up. We have SCC and state tournaments coming, so those games are always fun to come to, look at for them, they're usually in paper. Next week is Halloween, so students will be wearing their costumes to school. And there's rumors of a Halloween wake-up call happening as well. So that'll be fun. And then next weekend is also homecoming for all grades. And to mark your calendars, November 8th is the National Honors Society induction ceremony at 7:00 p.m. And that's always a really beautiful ceremony of some of our really high-achieving students.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, Tom, super devils report?
Yeah, so the first two items, the state testing results and then also the high school state testing results and college admissions report, I'm going to recommend to put off until the next meeting because Seth isn't here, Katie's not here, and Greg is long-distance on the phone. I think it would be valuable for us to have the whole gang here. So I recommend that. We did give a comprehensive report at the curriculum committee this morning, and I just know this is a late entry into the game, so I'm going to see if he has anything to add. Ryan, we covered some info with Jackie.
Yeah, okay.
Got your bearings? Do you have anything you wanted to share? Or did she cover it all for you?
I imagine she covered it all. I'm very sorry, like my car.
That's okay. It's pouring, it's lightning, it's like apocalyptic out there. I know. Okay, you're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, excellent.
I imagine she covered it all.
So 4.1 and 4.2 on the agenda, I'm going to ask just to push off until the next meeting. And we'll have a very comprehensive report on that. Gail wrote a 24-page report.
So when you're having fun.
4.3, the tri-board ad hoc committee. We haven't had a chance at the board level to really discuss this in a way to communicate it to the public. And I would like to put something on the board's website regarding this under our reconfiguration tab. So I thought it'd be an idea to mention this tonight and very briefly cover that this was really the seeds of this idea came from the tri-board, the full Board of Selectment, Board of Finance, Board of Ed meeting in July. A couple of board members, when we had shared the 10-year capital maintenance plan, there was discussion about other other alternatives. That's alternative option number one, that plan. And perhaps we can put our heads together to come up with some other options for the community. Long story short, Jane Fitzgerald, Tom Banish, Katie Stein, chairs of their respective boards, have put forth two members. Galen, you and Kirk are the representatives in the Board of Ed. We've had one meeting, we have one tomorrow at 7:30.
That's right.
We have a pretty aggressive schedule. We'll be meeting almost bi-weekly, it looks like, right through April.
We're meeting weekly for now.
Weekly for now?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we have established some draft parameters, draft mission, and draft deadline at this point.
I think, yeah, I think the mission statement's pretty clear. I mean, by April 1st, we have to come up with three to four options for the full tri-board to consider, using the current $100 million, $10-plus plan as the baseline. And then we're going to try to develop, try, have to develop additional options which, you know, are fiscally responsible, not only from the standpoint of the Board of Education, but also with respect to the overall town budget and other projects for which the town needs to spend money. And, you know, that's our charter. And you mentioned communication. We're talking about how to, well, I'm going to hush because you're probably going to talk about that. But yes, we're going to communicate to the public and also invite participation. And we already have one option that's been presented by a group. That also involves the academy property. And then Galen, tomorrow morning, is going to present some really impressive analysis that he did where he present valued, using various interest rate and inflation scenarios, the number of alternative options.
You'll have to break it down a couple of levels to get to us.
It's all, it's all on the table. All right.
Thank you, Kirk.
Thank you.
And we talked about this solicitation of public input, to have folks, you know, with any ideas. As you said, one is already on the table. We'll come up with a process for that. But I think probably more immediately, Kirk, we're looking for criteria by which to vet different ideas that come our way as well. So that'll be established at the outset as well. There's a very clear understanding that the Board of Ed budget is obviously an autonomous budget, where we determine what happens, our operating budget. However, capital projects such as facilities need to go through finance and selectmen and to a town vote. And they are the town buildings, you know, in essence, so we need to engage all three boards at this point. So we'll put some information on the website around that. In addition, I wanted to wait for this meeting to announce something publicly before they get populated up there. That's one, probably the most important. An update on the board's CIP plan, on the where are we headed tab. An update on the Opel project for Brown, on the where are we headed tab. And then finally, I realized that we did not put the actual instructional model from Brown that we adopted last spring up on the website. That'd be helpful, so folks can see how the school has changed in its, in its mission to intermediate model. So we're working, Rita is back in town tomorrow, I believe, and we'll work by the end of this week to get some more information up on that board's website. The other piece that we want to get up on the website as well is the presentation, the social and emotional learning presentation from last month, or last meeting, and all of the efforts that we make in that area. We also have some good news to share, changing gears. Received a letter a week ago. Mrs. Srees, we're delighted to inform you, your school district has won honorable mention in the Bonnie V. Carney Award of Excellence for Educational Communications. Honorable mention framed certificate was sent to the school district, and it can be presented to the Board of Ed when Mrs. Stein returns. And this was for our website. There was a recognition for our website. So, yeah, it's good news there. Final item is, the board will not be asked to act on this item till our next meeting, but I have Mr. Society Terry here because this morning he had presented with Mrs. Schneider from our high school, the program of studies for the high school for next year. We ask the board to take action every year in the fall before we go to print. So I'm going to have Mr. Society Terry and Mrs. Schneider, if they would please come forth and give your abridged version of the program of studies presentation.
Yes.
A bridge, do you like that word?
I love it. I love it. 10 minutes time, right? 45 minutes.
We powering up, Gail?
We are.
All right. Everyone has a copy?
Me too.
All right, so while we wait for the projector, as I know, I would just like to say thank you for your time, and especially this morning, we went over this in detail. This will be a quick version. If you don't stop me, I'm just going to keep going. And you have a packet of information in front of you. Really, the first 35 slides, it sounds like a lot, but we'll go quickly, are the presentation. After that, slides 36 to 81 are all the new course descriptions. So you can read those at your convenience. We're obviously not going to go over each and every one of those. But when we refer to the exciting changes, I think they're actually really exciting. Actually, when I met with Jackie and Ryan this morning, I said to Ryan, I think you're going to be upset that you're leaving this year because some of the opportunities are really unique and it's exciting to present our 19 and 20 program of studies. I want to thank Cindy Schneider, she puts a year's worth of effort into this process, Gail as well, our coordinators, and especially Sarah Sandora and Dan Grenier, who are chairing the curriculum work, which is a great deal of work. So we're going to get right into this and go over just changes. And if you have questions, again, feel free to stop me. So first and foremost, if you take a look, this is around course selection and scheduling changes. It's a minor change, we think it's actually really appropriate. It's really focused right here. The deadlines for adding a course. For a 1.5 credit course, it's always been 30 days. For a one-credit course, it's been 20 days. For some reason, for a half a credit course, it used to be 15 days. To miss 15 days out of a 60-day course didn't make any sense mathematically. We just changed it to 10, which seems like it's much more appropriate, and all the coordinators agreed. We did add this asterisk here that states request to add a course after the deadline will be reviewed by the guidance program coordinator and principal. And we think that's important because sometimes there's some scenarios that don't pertain to just that 10-day mark. But this was just to align with the other courses. And again, thinking of a one-credit course meeting 60 days, to miss 10 days and jump in, it's pretty challenging. So pretty simple change and something that we think's appropriate. Also, this is going to be discussed in this room much more often in a few years to come. But if you look on the left-hand side, you'll see through the class of 2022, those are the graduation requirements. The information in red here and here is not new, we just thought we would highlight it for this slide. This information will remain in the program of studies, this information is going to be added. From the State Department of Education, there are new graduation requirements that will pertain to the class of 2023 and beyond, that's our current eighth graders. Big difference here, 24 credits is now going to be moved up to 25 credits. That's not really a big issue at the high school. Last year's graduating class averaged 28 and 1/4 credits for graduation. So the number of credits is not an issue. But you will see in the next slide, the breakdown is a little bit different. And we always meet the minimum requirement of the state, but, you know, we'll talk with Gail, who will then present to you in the future about what the breakdown is when you look at this next slide. Here, through the class of 2022, this information has not changed. But starting with the class of 2023, you can see, for example, like humanities, at least nine credits, including civics and the arts. We will have more detail, that will come to you right now in the future when we get through this process. We did want the students who are currently eighth graders, who will get the program of studies in late January of this year or early February, to have this information so when they start, you know, selecting courses and looking through their book and getting excited about opportunities, they can get an idea of what the requirements are going to be. This will become more detailed, you know, in the very near future. Again, we were, we felt this was really important to have in the program of studies because this is the first class coming to us that it will pertain to. So those slides, again, if you're Jackie or Ryan, you're just looking at the left-hand column, and no worries. If you're in the eighth grade, it will be a little bit different. So nothing really good or bad, just really informational. The career cluster sequence, there's few pages in our program of studies that have probably been in there for too many years. And the information isn't really relevant anymore, and that's a result of the curriculum work and CTE. And we're just really removing three pages of career clusters for the reasons in the blue, you know, bullets. The new credit distribution requirements, identified courses in new categories, and the CTE department is organized around what we now call identified career pathways that overlap the former clusters. So more, we'll get into that in a moment, I'll show you what that actually means. This, you know, if any of you really go through the program of studies and you're wondering where those pages are next year, let us know because we're just going to remove them and you'll see why. Another really exciting opportunity, in line with the independent project course that was piloted two years ago and is now an official course. The science department over the last two years has done some incredible work writing curriculum. This is one of the new opportunities for students called science extension courses. If you look at the top, you can see it's a half-credit course for students in grades 11 and 12. It will meet for one trimester, and students will be able to sign up for this. A science teacher will have to teach this course because it is lab-based, and it could focus on interest in biology, chemistry, and physics. If you read this whole course description, I'm certainly not going to read it to you, it's much more than just an interest in biology or an interest in chemistry. It's a really exciting, Ryan's like, come on, I want to take this. A really, really exciting opportunity for our students, and I think it will be very popular. And, you know, we'll be able to report on that after, you know, course selections take place, you know, in March, we can give you an idea of some numbers, and I'm looking forward to getting in those classes. The one difference, although it's a science extension course, this will count towards overall credits, not a specific science credit. So students can take this in addition to their science courses, and our students do take a lot of science classes. So again, I do think this will be really popular. Any questions so far? I'm not having any wait time tonight. Clear the wait time. So there's a few departments that have no changes at all, and again, it's only a few, art, music, health, and theater. The departments with changes, beginning for the 19 and 20 school year, you can see how CTE and science of the curriculum cycle highlighted because they're, you know, in year two of that process. There are some, I would call them significant changes in English, we'll talk about, some minor in mathematics, simple one in physical education, as well as in social studies. Special services is a removal of a course, and world language is just some tweaks to some language and course descriptions for Latin I and Latin II. So what we're going to do next is just talk about each of those areas in order. And again, feel free to stop me if you have any questions. So CTE, the primary changes are really focused on being aligned to what we call five career pathways. And there's also a sixth, I wouldn't call it a pathway, but an exploratory experience. So before I talk a little bit more, look at this next slide. This is the CTE design, it's actually pretty cool, it'll be in the program of studies. You can see there are exploratory experiences, but then there's five specific career pathways that these courses are now clustered. Because of this is the actual reason why we're removing those pages on the career clusters that I talked about a few moments ago. So I'm going to go backwards for a moment, so you can see the courses are aligned with the pathways. Most grade prerequisites have been changed to allow all students to take these courses. You know, some used to be 10, 11, and 12, some only 11 and 12. But if there's space in the sections, we want to fill the courses. So we thought that was very positive. There is an exception for automotive tech and for CTE exploratory experiences, those are just 10 through 12, not ninth graders. And the UConn ECE course called Individual and Family Development remains 11th and 12th grade, that has not changed. And we're hoping the CTE offerings, which are pretty exciting as well, will really pique student interest, and a lot of kids will sign up for those. If you recall, CTE has been talked about a lot in this room for the work they've done over the past, I said to Gail, seems like four years, probably is four years, of looking through the program of studies and reviewing the course requests from students, and they've removed a lot of courses that are outdated and really didn't fit in. This is phase two now, and reduced 37 offerings to 32 seemingly very exciting opportunities. So some of the changes, again, around these pathways. These are courses that were removed from the program of studies, Gail mentioned this morning, you know, they're not just disappearing, a lot of them have been reimagined, and we'll talk about those in a second. But when you look at these, these courses, these 10 courses will no longer be offered in our program of studies and won't be options for our students. We have four brand-new CTE courses, which, you know, are going to be pretty exciting. These course descriptions are in, you know, probably area like 36, 37, 38 of your packet if you want to take a look at those course descriptions at your own convenience, that would be great. We also have some courses with new and or changed names. So formerly Child Development is now called the Whole Child. Little Hen Nursery School, formerly Little Hen Nursery School Lab, you can see the changes. We are actually including the information in parentheses in the program of studies because there are especially some underclassmen who probably signed up for a course like International Foods and are waiting for that to be available. So they'll know International Cuisine would be a very similar course that they can take. So these are just some name changes that we thought were more appropriate. These are the courses, all 13 of them, that have revised course descriptions based on the pathways and the curriculum that has been written. All of these course descriptions, again, are in the back part of your packet, some really exciting opportunities for students. If you, if the CTE department has not brought these courses to the Board of Ed yet for approval, they will by the end of this school year because their curriculum cycle is going to be complete at that point. But the course descriptions are pretty exciting, I think it is going to pique, again, a lot of student interest. So that's CTE in a nutshell. Anyone have any questions on CTE? All right, so English, this is a pretty significant change, all in one slide. So what we are doing, you know, Cindy, correct me if I make a mistake, feel free. What we are doing, we're making some pretty significant changes in English, and this was actually presented by the English teachers in the high school, and they're really excited about this. What we're doing for the 19 and 20 school year is World Lit and World Lit Honors are actually on hold. That course is not being offered, or those two courses, excuse me, are not being offered. And over the next year, you know, really by this time next year, because we'll have to have this information in the program of studies for next year, the English department working with Gail will be focused on reimagining that World Literature opportunity for the 2021 school year. And we're planning to have a variety of electives that juniors are required to select, you know, maybe six for an example, and they have to take two. We haven't gotten that far yet. But in the transition for the 19, 20 school year and beyond for sophomores, but for the 19, 20-only school year for juniors, all of the students will take either American Lit or American Literature Honors. This will allow for a pretty seamless one-year transition. So when the current sophomores are finished with American Lit, they, or actually, excuse me, next year sophomores are finished with American Lit or American Lit Honors, they will have an opportunity to take some of the electives that will be offered. For our current juniors, they're not going to miss out on content. You know, they're still going to take that American Literature class, they already are in World Lit right now, so they're not going to miss content. The fact that all of this can be done in one year in a pretty seamless transition is, it's a lofty goal, but it's a pretty exciting. You know, we did talk with the English department and with Gail, we have to be able to have this information to present to you at this time next year. And I think it's going to be well-received by students. If you recall, the seniors get to pick a few electives in English as well, so there'll be more choice for juniors and seniors starting next year. So again, pretty exciting opportunity, you know, a lot of work to be done. Gail will be informing you of all of this work over the course of the school year and over the summer, and then we'll be back here next year talking about where we're at with this.
One question.
Yes, go ahead.
Will kids mix sophomores and juniors in the, like, will be a mix of?
They will not. Great question. They will not. Those will be grade-level specific, and we can set infinite campus up to ensure that doesn't happen.
Sophomores, three trimesters.
Doesn't like to miss out.
Juniors, two.
Right.
Any others? All right, so mathematics. The math department took a look at their prerequisites for seven courses, and some were pretty unclear. Some seemed to block some kids out of getting into some courses, and others just weren't consistent with the wording. So all they did was revise wording on seven of their courses. And you could see just for an example, this is Algebra I, it's one and a half credit course. This was the previous prerequisite, they're changing it to this. Again, I'm not going to, you have this in front of you, so I'm not going to read each one to you. For geometry, you know, a change, bless you. That is much clearer and probably opens the opportunity for more students to take this course. A geometry class for grades 10 and 11, you know, used to say something as simple as Algebra I, you know, the math department wanted to be sure that it was the successful completion of Algebra I before you could take geometry. So, you know, just good wording and, again, alignment and consistency in the way they write their prerequisites. You can see some of the changes with the strike-throughs, as well as the additional information that's in red. The math department worked on this for some time and are pleased with the changes. I think it will be easier for students, again, like this one's pretty simple. Instead of all of this language, it's just a successful completion of Algebra I, and geometry passed the class, and you could take Algebra II. Precalculus, you know, changed a previous prerequisite to have a little bit more detail and a little clarity and consistency. And statistics as well, you know, the same pattern. And they've been seemingly waiting to do this for a little while. And, you know, they sent us this information, and we said we're happy to, you know, present this to the Board of Ed. In physical education, a long time coming, you know, we have a self-defense for women course that an 11th-grade girl at this point could have taken instead of PE junior year for, I'm not sure why that was ever designed for women. We talked to the PE department, and now we're just crossing off four women in the title and in the actual description, and any junior can take that. They can take either junior PE or junior self-defense. You know, we've talked to a lot of kids about this, and, you know, they, a lot of them said, you know, it's about time. And we're pleased with that, but again, instead of just this being offered to half of the juniors, now any junior who's interested can take this course. Questions? All right, so science, science has done a great deal of work. I think that would be the understatement of the evening. They have removed from the program of studies, and again, these courses, the topics haven't disappeared, they've been reimagined, but the courses outside of biological systems that's been replaced by biology, all of the other ones have been removed, and you'll see the replacements coming up in a moment. From the program of studies, the new courses, you can see a list, you know, biology, for example, replacing biosystems, and then some really exciting titles if you look up here. I think this, again, is going to pique a lot of student interest when we distribute this during the January and February months. And just a note in the program of studies, this was a copy and paste from a PDF, so if you're wondering why the font looks different, that's why. The new course is highlighted in just a note so kids are aware that Biosystems has changed the biology, and just a strike-through in, with the exception of topics in science. So that's just really informational. A big change, the previous ninth-grade students, including this current ninth-grade, would either take Integrated Science I and II over the course of their freshman year or Biology Honors. Integrated Science I and II will no longer be offered. All freshmen will take either Biology or Honors Biology starting next year. Pretty exciting. The Biology course is a two-trimester course, Honors Biology is a three-trimester course. But some options that have been added, everything in red will be a new course next year. For ninth and 10th-grade students, these are one-trimester courses with no prerequisites. So for the Honors Bio student who really loves science and wants to find in their schedule an extra, maybe a chemistry class, to get an idea about chemistry that, you know, they're curious about, that will probably fit in their schedule. For the Bio student who has the two-trimester science class, they will now have an opportunity to have three trimesters of science if they sign up for any one of these three courses. So I think that's a really exciting opportunity, and I'm curious to see, you know, which courses get the most student interest and how we schedule that. But again, I think really positive opportunities for our freshmen, and these three courses will be available to 10th-grade students as well. The science course options for students in grades 10 through 12, these are two-to-three trimester courses. The ones in the dark font have not changed, or they've changed, the courses aren't new, their course descriptions changed. Honors Physics is a new course that will be offered for students who meet the prerequisites. The science course options that are one trimester in length for students in grades 10 through 12, you know, Anatomy and Physiology remains, and then two really cool courses, you know, an infectious disease course or an agricultural science course. So students who, you know, maybe are in a two-trimester science course in grade 10 can pick up a one-trimester elective that is probably going to be really interesting to them based on the course titles and the course descriptions. Options for students in grades 11 through 12, you know, new courses, chemistry for health science, you could read the others. Biotech is new this year. If you recall, we did talk about that last year. We're running two sections this year, it's a really exciting course. And the interest level's very high. I would anticipate it will be the same for the other new courses that are being offered. So science, great deal of work going on, and I think the program of studies will reflect that, and kids are going to be faced with some challenging choices because the courses are so exciting. Switching gears, social studies, a quick and easy change. Civics and American Government, which is currently a graduation requirement and will remain a graduation requirement, was previously only offered to students in grades 11 through 12. We're opening that up to grades 10, 11, and 12 because it does fit in a lot of students' schedules, and a lot of students want to take that course to have other opportunities in either the social studies department or other departments as they go through high school for the, you know, next few years. The special services, this is a course that was removed. This course was titled Transition Internship. It really should never have been in the program of studies. This isn't a course a student could just write in during the course selection process. This would be a student who has special needs. If the, a discussion happened in a PPT where an internship would seem appropriate, the PPT would recommend. PPT would recommend an internship, and the team would design the opportunity that best fit the student's needs. This, I mean, just wasn't appropriate, so we're removing it from the program of studies, but we certainly wouldn't remove that opportunity from a student who we thought would benefit it, you know, through the special ed process, which would take place during a PPT meeting. So you'll just see that course will be removed. World Language has two minor changes in the course descriptions that just make it a little bit clearer on Latin One and Two. Those are included in slides that are later on in the presentation. And something we're trying brand-new this year for ninth and tenth-grade students, it doesn't apply to students in eleventh and twelfth grade because they don't have study halls, but we are going to try to actually treat a study hall like a course, with no credit, of course, but if, let's say Jackie plays field hockey, here's a good example, and she knows that's the busiest time of her year as a freshman and a sophomore, she will be able to write that on her course selection sheet, and if she gets a study hall, it will be during the fall season per her request. Can't really pick the period, you know, period six would be the best, but we did talk to a lot of students about this, and a lot of our students do go to guidance and say, you know, "I'm really busy in the winter. Could I have the study hall opportunity during the winter trimester?" We're trying to pre-plan for this, and I think this will be really popular. It's not much work on our end, it's just students telling us, you know, Ryan, if he says, you know, it's a tenth grader, "Spring musical is a huge commitment." You know, "I'd rather have my study hall opportunity in that spring trimester." That would be an opportunity to sign up for that instead of trying to change your schedule once they're set at the beginning of the school year, which is not always easy. So that's it, that's about as fast as I can go. You have fifty more slides to follow, so if you have any questions on those, see Gail. That's her piece, and I'll happily answer any questions if you have any.
Is it proper?
Yes, there's an adult in the classroom, and the students would just, there's a roster and everything to take attendance.
And then my other question is, can they do it ninth grade and tenth grade?
Yes. And the reason it's not offered to juniors and seniors, they don't have study hall, they have time, if their schedule has nothing during period three, they can go juniors cafeteria or library, seniors cafeteria, library, or bridge, so they don't have an assigned spot. Would you think that will be very popular, though?
Quick question.
Sure.
I think the answer to this one is, go ahead, Greg.
Can I just jump in and say, I can hear everybody really clearly except whoever asked the last question, I can't hear.
Sorry, it was Abby, I'll speak up.
Okay, Abby.
Greg, this is Tom, I'll try to speak up. When we're looking at the changing of courses, particularly, for example, in the sciences, when the courses change for content and also the titles of the courses change, are those titles, I imagine the answer is yes, are those titles sort of standard in the industry and/or do college admissions offices recognize those titles? Or would there be any way to kind of made a test to make sure that, you know, there's not going to be anything lost in translation when the transcripts go to colleges?
Gail, you want that one?
Sure. Course titles vary a lot from school to school, so there is no standard course titles that translate the same. What we try to provide is an overview to any applications to college about Daniel Hand, what it's about, kind of the course offerings, the philosophies, and that, I think it's like two pages, is that right, Cindy? Goes out with every transcript. So that invites a lot of query or a lot of back and forth about that. But the program of studies is also posted online on the Daniel Hand website, so if anybody was looking for a deeper meaning behind a course title, they could do that.
And also worth noting is we do pay really careful attention to the length of the title.
Me too.
It sounds simple, but if you can't read it on the transcript, we don't get calls for clarification, and we do make sure it fits, so conceptual chemistry fits.
If you didn't get to the word chemistry until the end, it might catch some.
Absolutely, so we do pay attention to that piece.
Yeah.
Yes, conceptual something.
And I know the Science Department, when they work on it, makes sure that keywords were in those titles, so you see them, so it had chemistry.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you, it's very impressive analytically, intellectually, logistically. I don't know how you guys keep some of the balls up in the air. It's just amazing, so.
We appreciate the support.
Thank you for having us, thank for your time.
Thank you. We'll send you some copies printed in January.
Yeah.
Oh, it'll be pretty, that's Mr. Schneider's job.
Gail, what's the bottom of the plot say? That's the only one I didn't get.
The bottom of the plot is, um, exploration. So that was things like boat building. It didn't really fit in a pathway, so we called it exploration.
That's the last part on the bottom.
The bottom, the bottom bottom.
The pen.
Yeah.
Thank you, I just didn't read it.
But it's little one-offs, like boat building is one of them.
Okay.
Didn't really fit.
But it's called exploration.
Yeah.
It is so tiny.
It's pretty fun. If it was bigger, your packet would have been bigger. That's it for me.
All right. Are there any other board member comments? Great. All right, let's move to the board committee reports. I guess we'll start with curriculum to development. TJ and Gail and Cindy covered ninety-nine percent of it. The only thing I'd like to add would be Art Sickle presented the results of a very successful Chromebook launch for ninth graders. I think there were two hundred and nine, I'm not sure what the number is.
About that?
Two twenty-nine.
Two twenty-nine, thank you. And it seems to be a success. TJ, would you like to say anything more about that?
I would agree, I think it's been a great success. Smooth rollout, because we're pretty excited, teachers excited as well, and we're learning how to use them really effectively, and also curbing some cell phone use in the classrooms with pressure.
And TJ, just like I go on, TJ shared this morning that freshman-only classes were restricting cell phone use because we have a learning device in the room already with the Chromebook. And as we go through the grades, we will need to expand that policy, it builds on the policy at Poulsen and lower levels, so it only makes sense.
And it also has implications for textbook, reduced textbook expense and usage in the future.
Great.
So that's it for Kirk.
Okay. Communications Committee, yes. So the Communications Committee met on October eighteenth to finalize our process for work and review. We decided to focus our first message on the work of the ad hoc tri-board, and Kirk has volunteered to work on a first draft for review at our next meeting on October thirtieth. Based on advice from Board Attorney Tom Mooney, and to be compliant with FOIA requirements, our monthly meeting will include two main activities. First, to review that month's draft message that will be prepared in advance by one member, and then distributed with the agenda, and then finalize that message for publication as a committee. And the second half of that meeting will be to select the topic and author for the next month's message. The full board will be notified of each month's topic in advance to allow for board input. We have added, as you all saw, one more meeting to the calendar for October thirtieth at six at Poulsen, and then we'll be on track for regular monthly meetings. Our hope is to publish each message in the source on the board website and on district social media sites. The committee is compiling a list of topics for subsequent columns and outreach, and I encourage board members to suggest any topics they'd like to see included in our outreach. In addition, board members who are not members of the Communications Committee but would like to write a column on a particular topic would be most welcome. Messaging will focus on work of the board and how that affects the town, and some of the suggested topics in the future include the budget process, how money is spent, the curriculum review cycle, the work of each committee, and other topics that may address particular questions we might hear around town. For example, why are we spending more money per pupil when enrollment is declining, and other issues as they come up. Messages will also encourage public comment and questions via our website, and will direct readers to the district website, public meetings, and other meetings where events interest. End of report.
Okay, thank you. All right. We have the Facilities Committee. Greg is calling in, Seth is not here, so I guess it falls to me to read Seth's report. He did the heavy lifting. I might give you the highlights, the rest will be entered into the record. The Facilities Committee met on Tuesday, October sixteenth. Bill McMinn and his McMinions presented information on upcoming facility projects impacted by the revised BOE CIP plan for two thousand nine, or two thousand nineteen to twenty. The Facilities Committee discussed the projects that Bill's planned before voting unanimously to advance all three projects recommended by Bill and Colliers International. Those items, I think, will be voted on towards the end of the meeting. These projects are the replacement of the Daniel Hand audio system, the purchase of elementary school furniture, and also the purchase of moving services using contractors on the state master contract. I'm going to, Seth writes extremely well, so I can't do it justice. I will try to get the highlights. The committee turned its attention to the Brown Intermediate School OPA project, that matters on the agenda to discuss and possibly take action. During the discussion, it's noted that the board's reduction of its CIP request resulted in a priority being placed on this project. It was further noted that the board's vote to advance the new CIP request also served to ratify the Brown Playground Committee's project plan as proposed. And I think we'll call it a day on that.
I have just a comment about that, which I will work through also with Seth. I have a little bit of a concern that there are expenditures being voted on by the board that are going around the Finance Committee that wasn't exactly how the Facilities Committee was established when we voted on it. I don't have any alterations to them. I think that just the way the calendar used to work, policy of planning would start it, policy would prove it, that was sort of how the process was envisioned. I think we could get into some tricky roads down the way. I think if, for example, the budget, the projects were over budget and they were approved and voted on, that would put the Finance Committee in kind of a weird place because somewhere do we do for that? Or other committees could then start spending money and advancing it to the full board. So I think that's something that we just need to look at moving forward. Just a concern.
Thank you. Are there any comments, discussions? All right, we have, well, that's a nice lead in the Finance.
All right, there you go. Okay, so the Finance Committee met tonight. We reviewed our current budget status. We are at eighty-five percent of our budget is committed at this point, leaving us with a balance that is not committed, meaning there's not been a PO written, although we still have plans in place for that money. Our balance is roughly seven million dollars. That's not committed at this point. Again, take that with a great soul. We also, per the board discussion last board meeting, we explored funding for a dedicated SRO at the high school. Chief Drum came because we wanted to get a sense if it was something that where we could find the money, would it be something that he would be interested in? He is interested in it. The Board of Finance is supportive, the Board of Selectment is supportive. Discussion sort of ended there, and we'll be, I think we'll come back and be a further discussion among the full board about, you know, is this something that we want to do? And then Tom and Stacy and Gail, whomever could look deeper within our budget to see if the funding is there. I'm going to just, we adopted the nineteen twenty budget calendar, which, do they have copies of it? We will get you all copies of it.
We have to clean it up, we've made some changes.
Yeah.
So we'll email.
We'll email everybody a copy of it.
Fresh copy.
Yeah. We did have, we had requested money from the Special Ed Reserve Fund last year to cover expenses, and we ended up being able to return money. We have about a hundred and thirty-five thousand which we can return. We are going to request the eighty-five thousand of it go towards replenishing the Special Ed Reserve Fund. And then the last, this was sort of in the middle of our meeting, but normally, in years past, the Finance Committee has handled the budget assumptions within the committee. We do work and then present recommendations to you. It's Katie's understanding and Seth's certainty that the Finance Committee has no responsibility for budget assumptions. So I've just asked Tom to take them to the full board rather than try to argue. We'll work on them as a board, and then every, it will be a public. I think it's actually a good exercise, given all the discussion in the town right now about what we're spending, and it's a good idea, it's a good exercise of transparency. So Tom's going to present the budget assumptions.
So for some history, because some board members on the table who aren't familiar with this process, my first budget was in the fall of two thousand twelve, and at that time, we were pretty deep into discussions about whether we should convert our kindergarten model from half-day to full-day. And there was, I think, a little bit of disagreement even among the board as to whether we should do that. So I needed some direction because that was a big mover and shaker in a budget. I'll be going to double our kindergarten program or not, so I wasn't going to just put that into a budget and then have that debated in the budget process. I didn't recommend to do that, excuse me. I recommended that we have that debate about whether or not we should have a kindergarten program prior to development of a budget. Sometimes you have the time to do that, and we did have the time to do that. There aren't always times to do that. Sometimes we have big-ticket items that kind of emerge. We love our deadlines of, you know, having a budget to the town by January thirtieth and so forth, but things do emerge. We're a dynamic organization. We had the time to do this, so I asked if we can engage in a process called Budget Assumptions, which is something that I asked the board to take formal action on, that they would expect a superintendent's recommended budget with certain elements included. And that year, it was full day K. Over time, our process emerged, so we just had some standing guidelines, which you'll see at the top of the document, that are fairly generic in a sense, but they are informative nonetheless. And then we have a list of what we call budget objectives. Those are programmatic. Those could be things that the board took action on. Those are things that the administration recommends that we include in the budget. And those are opportunities for the board to have those discussions and possibly even come to consensus prior to voting on a budget, because that timeline gets kind of compressed. You get a budget document handed to you, delivered to you, pimped up over the Christmas break, and then within a few weeks, by the third week or fourth week of January, we're taking formal action and voting. So if we can have the discussions on some of those programmatic elements before that in the budget assumption process, it kind of takes that off the table, and then we can kind of look at the finer points of the budget during the actual workshops. It's worked pretty well, seven budgets in, I think we've done a pretty good job of that, of using this process. In this budget itself and these recommendations, there are two, it was a few programmatic elements I want to point out. Number one, there's an assumption that we will absorb the second, well, it's a school safety initiative officer. We have two cops in our schools, essentially. One is an SRO, which was trained, and was agreed to. We have a contract with the police department and the police commission on that officer. We split seventy-third of that salary in that of the package. The police have funded a second officer, a hundred percent. The school safety initiative officers after the Sandy Hook tragedy, they incorporated that as a part of their patrol of the schools. And Chief Drum's been very open in the past, saying that three thousand kids, you know, five hundred adults, that's its own separate patrol right there. So they have the second officer. The difference is being, the SRO is our officer, and they cannot pull that officer unless there is true town emergency. The school safety initiative officer, they can pull because we realize it's another officer that they're assigning to us that we're not essentially on the books paying for. Jack had asked, Chief Drum had asked, just prior to the board's workshops in the beginning of January last year, if the Board of Ed would assume that second officer's salary, have that officer or another officer go through the SRO training, and that would be two Board of Ed-funded police officers in our schools. I told him, it was so late in the process that my recommendation was that, you know, I would put this in an assumption for the nineteen twenty budget, but certainly not for the eighteen nineteen budget. It was so late, we didn't have a chance to really go through that. Worked out the town, and the arrangement we have for this year is that officer is still funded by the town, but there's a clear understanding and a handshake agreement that we're not going to be getting that officer funded by the town production. So that's clearly outlined in here, that we will absorb that salary and benefit for that second officer. The other programmatic pieces are two expansions. One that went to the board last year that was not approved at the board level, and that is a literacy coach dedicated to the secondary level, particularly in high school. So that is a program expansion that's in there as a recommendation. The second, on the heels of the social-emotional learning The second, on the heels of the social-emotional learning presentation, and I want to be clear, we'll have separate presentations on these. Okay? So we'll have a separate evening where we will present our rationales while they're included. This is just to get the conversation and the items out there. It is the expansion of our school counseling program down to the elementary level and the addition of one elementary school counselor at shared between Ryerson and Jeffrey. We will have an in-depth discussion. I'm going to ask the board to refrain on any kind of judgment right now because they haven't had a chance to discuss where that role fits and why we see it as a necessity at the elementary level. There are a lot of elements in here around the reconfiguration. There's one very clearly on realizing savings associated with a school closure and then support essentially of our strategic plan via our balanced scorecard. So I'll hand this out and I'd like to go through the lines individually. Gail, do you have a copy?
Not that I haven't written all of it.
No? Oh, do you need those copies?
No.
Oh. And if our high school students would like to read along, here we go. Okay, so let's start right at the top. Those are just the general guidelines that we adhere to. We would spend a little bit this year. Essentially, the first one is when we're looking to fund things, we will look to reallocate where we can based on expenditure history to fund any priorities. We expect to include our known costs, but this year's tricky. We have a number of personnel committee knows this. We have a number of contracts up in the air, so we're projecting what those settlements will be associated with those contracts. Number three, we have staffing profiles that we have to align with enrollment projections and you can always expect us to have our projections based on the Board of Ed's class-size policy. So it's really a matter of how many kids and based on the policy, how many staff members do we need? And then obviously, programmatic and state mandates, programmatic needs. Core allocation for new board members is a phrase that's a term of art locally for us. I've never heard it, but here I learned about it. It is essentially our per pupil expenditure for instructional supplies. We have a factor that we multiply by at the elementary level, the middle level, and the high school level based on enrollment. Bill is always McMinn, always looking to pre-purchase electricity and working with art for diesel fuel, and we do some estimating and some work with our energy consultant on the natural gas market. Bill also works largely to realize any efficiencies in energy conservation, number of projects there, preventative maintenance, the facilities. And, you know, we have a well-decorated collaborative arrangement with the town with a shared facilities, a shared technology, and a shared finance director. There are some purchasing consortiums that we participate in along the way as well. And the seventh operating guideline is just to support the strategic plan via the priority, strategic objectives. So as we go through, these are more specific to 1920. Number eight, very clearly, we're looking to realize the savings of the closure of Island Avenue via staffing and all of the operational costs associated with that. We have identified these four primary drivers when the admin team had worked to make decisions for staffing. And we've looked at every single position in the system, every single position, part-time, full-time, certified, classified, support services, so forth. We have gone through that in this room, probably for the past, TJ and Gail, I'll say, since August in depth. It started in July, but we've been dedicating basically every other Wednesday for three or four hours to this task. But our drivers around staffing are, we're supporting the core instructional program. We have individual student supports, whole-child initiatives, and continuous improvements to the system that we want to make sure are primary drivers. Number 10, we want to be informed by the needs for reconfiguration. We have an impact on curriculum development. We have adjustments and impact on resources along the way, staffing allocations I touched on. And then the fourth sub-bullet there, making sure that as teachers are reallocated, as support staff are reallocated, that we can support them if they have changed in the job description as a result of the redistricting and the reconfiguration. I mentioned this at the outset, number 11, the comprehensive, we're looking to go K-12 with our school counseling program, and that will be the addition of a 1.0 counselor at Jeffrey and Ryerson. And as I said earlier, please withhold any judgment on that. We will have a full presentation on that in the near future, as well as the second bullet, which we had discussed, but we will include another presentation on that. Number 12 I mentioned as well, that second officer, that school safety initiative officer, the Board of Ed's expected to absorb that if they want to continue that position next year. Number 13, we have a curriculum cycle. Gail has an audit of programs that has to go through for anticipated revision. We're looking for some efficiencies and adjustments to one-year cycles. So we've been doing two-year cycles because the programs are so comprehensive in language arts, in math, in science. Some of these programs are certainly a little lighter than that in the arts, using PE and so forth. Anticipate a reduction of, anticipate the impact of PD time for curriculum writing, revisions to the graduation requirements. TJ touched on that earlier as well. Number 14, you know, our engine is really, our lifeblood is around the training that we do with teachers, and we've been very open about that from the outset. So we have our renewal cycle for curriculum. We have recommendations from our Tri-State Consortium, visit originally, now a follow-up that's coming up in May. Core content, support for PD there, especially Daniel Hand, and then overall, our programmatic initiatives. Number 15, we have the multi-year educational technology plan, which we touched on briefly with the one-to-one program at the high school. Obsolescence replacement for new board members, you'll hear about this a lot in the budget season as well. When we plan on technology, one of the big errors that I observed quite a bit in the early part of the 2000s and late 90s when technology became ubiquitous in schools, there wasn't a replacement plan put in place by most systems. We bought machines and didn't realize in four or five years, this machine had to be replaced. So we have an obsolescence replacement plan that Art Sickle manages and needs to be funded to keep our systems up to speed and date and up to current dates. We have reporting systems and strategic plan work with the balanced scorecard within the technology plans, so we're looking to adopt some technology solutions to reporting systems in our scorecard and our strategic plan. And I don't know if we can ever have enough bandwidth. I think probably can say that in my house as well as at work. The last sub-bullet there, if you turn the page over, is the one-to-one program for student devices to continue that next year for freshmen. Done a great deal of work. We shared this today at the Curriculum Committee with our high school intervention program. I am seeing a high school with this level of specificity and attention to intervention. It began really four or five years ago with our ESS program on the social-emotional side. It's continued to grow on the academic side. We do subsidize, number 17, the food service program. We're keeping that at a flat funding level. Art and Stacy can talk about that more at length. Our athletic department has been flat-funded for the better part of four or five years right now, but everything else that's involved in athletic has gone up as cost of living goes up. So we have to look at adjustment. This is not a monumental adjustment, but an adjustment has to be made around transportation and so forth. And then our facilities, plan and cycle maintenance, Bill is here to answer to that. Adequately funding repairs. We made some nice adjustments last year to maintain that. And then obviously, anything regarding the reconfiguration. So that's the high-level view on this. We'll come back to this. We ask for board action on the assumptions because then that gives us a really clear guideline and some lanes to work with them when we present a budget, a recommended budget to the superintendent and the administration in December.
Okay. All right.
Any questions on that before we proceed?
Great. Tom, Personnel?
Sure. Personnel Committee met October 11th with the teacher's negotiation team. The negotiations are proceeding and will be convening again as a committee on, committee alone on November 1st. End of report.
Okay. Policy Committee, Greg, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, wonderful. Now we have Violet here. So.
This is just a brief report. Just that you're seeing the second reading for the three items before you, policy 163, 232, and 5120.36. The second one is 5060, and the third is 5113. We have not met. We're looking to reschedule our meeting, but these second readings are before you and the committee is still taking any comments on those. Also before you is the 1920 school calendar, which I believe we're still on schedule to discuss again at our next meeting. And I think that's the end of the report.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We have the Learn liaison, I've lost track.
It's me.
All right.
Yes. So the Learn Board of Directors met on October 11. Learn Director of the Office of Innovation and Development, Jack Cross, presented on Learn's efforts at innovation and regionalism, including stakeholder engagement, marketing, and communications partnerships in the Ocean Avenue Learning Academy. The Executive Director provided administrative updates as well as pending policy changes due to legislation. A legislative task force has been established to review the current fingerprinting processes and its implications for local school districts and risks. The regional transportation study is ongoing. Future suggested topics for the roundtable discussion included how districts are currently sharing services, pre-K for all four-year-olds and possibly including three-year-olds. The Learn Board of Directors will next meet on November 8th. End of report.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And we more or less, Kirk, I think we more or less covered the tribe board working group.
Yes.
So we will clean that up next time. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. I'm sorry. Thank you very much. I do feel, is there any audience response to this mission? Bill, not to put you in the spot, I feel like I slighted you in the committees and facilities.
On November 1st, Red Sox are up 1-0 with a runner on second, 1-0.
All right. I hear right, during this meeting.
I want to make your correction to that comment. It's actually 2-0.
Oh. Well, now I'm getting.
Now we know what brings to it.
Now I'm starting to worry. He's a Red Sox fan. Sorry.
That's mine.
All right. Thank you, Bruce. All right. So now we can move on to consent agenda. 8.1 bill's payable. We have, I guess we need a motion for this.
Second.
Second. Thank you very much. We have a vote, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. It's a pretty good script law. Thank you very much. All right. Next, we have a motion for the next action item. Just at the minutes of the October 9th, 2018 Board of Education meeting. Is there any discussion, right?
Right. Yeah, there's something missing from the minutes, the vote that we took on allowing the Finance Committee to look at the Daniel Hand High School SRO. So we will look at the video and say exactly who's made the motion, because that's what's not clear, and then amend the minutes accordingly.
Okay, sure.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah. We'll read the minutes, make sure it happened and how.
You're tabling the vote.
So I think we'll table the vote on the minutes for October 9th. Greg, does that sound correct in terms of parliamentary procedure?
Yes, that's correct.
Great. All right. Thank you. All right. The next action item is, we have a motion to approve Daniel Hand High School cafeteria AV improvements to be contracted to HB Communication of North Haven, Connecticut Department of Administrative Services, State Contract Number 16PSX0190.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
So.
Great company.
We have to, we have to do this exactly as is, you know, to comply with law. Bill and TJ are here, just so the board knows, these are projects already funded in this year's budget. These aren't new projects. Bill and TJ?
I'm happy to give a lot of information, just a quick overview if you're looking for that.
Quick.
Sure. We did a survey recommendation last August on what improvements needed. We compiled a committee with TJ and all the players of the user of the AV in the cafeteria and Colliers recommended B8 HB, excuse me, and I think they're a good company and I highly recommend them as well.
TJ, student's perspective, what's the big win here?
The big win is ease of use and also a sound system that matches the quality of the performances that take place in the dining and assembly hall, because that's lacking right now. You know, the system lasted a long time and is just outdated at this point.
I say this often publicly, I'll say it again, we have incredible performers at that level and they perform in a cafeteria. And it's good to have a sound system, am I incorrect, to match the quality of performances. Cafeteria, actually dining and assembly hall is the official name. It's a cap in my world.
It's a big project. The schedule will be for summer of 2019.
Yeah.
We hope to get started and do some of the work during the April break, but the completion will be before the start of next, next week. And I'm very confident that we will be on time and within budget.
As will.
Very exciting project.
It is.
Very exciting.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept this?
Yes. I think we did already.
We did. All right. Thank you. Let's have a vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. Motion passes. All right. We have a motion to accept the next action item, and I will try to enunciate more clearly since this is for the record and official, to approve moving services needed for the 2019-2020 school year to be contracted with William B. Meyer Incorporated to provide moving services plus supplies under the Connecticut Department of Administrative Services, State Contract Number 14PSX0161.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Discussion?
This is not as exciting as the last one, but again, has to be included. I forgot to mention this on the last one, and for all three of these, Connecticut State Department of Administrative Services, that is the list, right, that we do not have to go out to RFP as long as they're on the basis, correct?
Right. That's one of our acceptable practices. They're already publicly bid. This company, Meyer W., William B. Myers is a, you know, company that Colliers also uses a lot. And, you know, it's a very short time period, so we want a company that's going to be able to help us out. I've already tentatively scheduled moves for July, starting on July 8th. And I met with, you know, all the principals who are having facilities being altered and moved. It was all confident that once again, this is our operating budget, along with funding with Gail's library, I believe, and I'm confident that we'll be on time with the budget.
And this also was a budget assumption last year. So just to be clear, that big giant Gantt chart that we've been using and informed the budget assumptions last year, so we can get moving on it this year. I don't want to understate how complex closing a school and moving materials and to the right places in a timely manner to start on time. Bill's been doing a great job and Gail's supporting the design of this, so I'm strongly encouraged the board to support this.
Thank you. I'd also like to add that these last three items were reviewed by the Facilities Committee last meeting. Just to complete that loop. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks. Motion passes. All right. The next action item, to approve elementary school furniture for the 2019-20 school year to be contracted under the State of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services, contracts numbers 16PSX0190 and/or 15PSX0041. Furniture Committee will review and select companies for price, service, and quality. Do we have a motion to?
So moved.
So move. Second. All right.
A little history on this, you know, the committee, which started with Catherine Hart and Kelly Spooner and teachers, you know, selected the furniture. I have a lengthy list of what they picked. We didn't name the companies off that contract because we want to select pricing and specific furniture types. If anybody's interested, I can share the list. I did bring one copy if anybody was interested. I would like to make a clarification, though. We're also going to, with the same contractor, remove the furniture because removing the furniture is, you know, is tricky. You don't want to take it out of there until the furniture comes, you know? Trucks, you know, happen, fires happen, stuff happens, and, you know, I believe that we will make it on time and within the budget, but I also like to plan and not remove the furniture until, the old furniture, until the new furniture is. furniture until, the old furniture, until the new furniture is, is that one too?
Wait, so does that mean that the furniture is going to be moved to its new home and then removed, and the new furniture is going to come in there?
So my plan is to remove the old furniture, the contractor who's going to give us the new chair, is going to take the old chair out.
Right, so if the chair had been moved from Island to Jeffrey, we'll still move it, to make sure we have something.
So let's clarify, we're moving staff material.
Right.
There's only very limited stuff coming out of Island. In all the other schools, there's no moving of material. There might be some bookcases or some selective stuff moving from to Brown School, because they might need some new bookcases, but the teacher's staff is moving its own stuff. I mean, we're moving their books and their products that they teach with, but we're not moving any furniture excluding a few items, and I can tell you what those few items are.
I just wasn't understanding. So the furniture that's there, that's, as I say, at Brown right now, is being replaced?
No. Browns, no furniture, Ryerson and Jeffrey, correct.
Right, elementary, that's right. So it's being replaced.
So Ryerson and Jeffrey furniture will be removed when the new stuff is coming in. I'm going to have the company that brings the new furniture and take the old stuff out as part of their deal, so we don't have to worry about that.
I think the sequence of the action items sounded like we're moving Island's material.
That's what I was trying to say. It sounds strange, okay.
No.
That makes a lot more sense.
No, we are taking some of the furniture from Island that was bought new and that has value, and we haven't really agreed on where we're going to split that up, because the elementary schools are going to get new furniture if they need it, we'll go over there. There's some specialty furniture at some of the elementary schools that will go probably with whoever needs it. But that is a typical room, you know, there's going to be either 10, 20 desks and chairs or tables, assortments. We want that approved to go at the same time.
And Bill, our agreement with the town was August 8?
August 5th, I believe, that day.
That we would be, and whatever's not moved out would stay there, and now with the vote last night, I've assumed that there'd be a pursuit of whatever's left behind.
Yes, and so my goal is, you know, July 8th, you know, I'm going to start early so I can get out way in time. And we also agreed if we're out and we have no issues, we're going to give it over early. That was my understanding, and that will be my goal with August 8 as the deadline, and I'll start the beginning of July. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Shall we bring to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Old business, old business to be brought up. Check. Future agenda items?
Just recommending this, consistent with what we've talked about, that the board take up through appropriate process, consideration, the question of whether to add SRO to the current fiscal year budget. And that...
We want to add it to the budget, to find the money within the budget. We're not adding any money, just want to make that clear.
Add the position.
Yeah, to add the position.
Right.
With the budget question having been vetted already. So the question basically is for the board to process as a whole, is there a need to add an SRO to the current structure for the current year?
Just to make it more confusing, based on the budget assumption, that would be a third.
Right. That we would add to the budget.
Right. Taking into consideration what's currently in place with both an SRO as well as an SIO, in addition to what Tom represents, what the budget assumptions are for next year, to consider that in totality.
Yeah. Just a request for a future amendment.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Do you leave it on?
We'll put that on the report.
Yep. Greg, do you have anything to say?
I just wanted to add that, because I couldn't quite hear all of it. I just want to speak up to say that if we are going to discuss any matters related to security, that the executive committee considers whether or not that should happen in executive session as fit and standard.
Okay, yep, fair point, thank you. All right.
Speaking of...
Number 15, meetings and dates of importance are attached to the agenda, and we are just about there. We need a motion to, for action items to enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All right. I think we shall...
We need to vote.
We need to vote? Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Thank you, Bill.
Have a light day.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.